Next we'll hear from the executive branch and the witness is Robert Zosmer, who has become a regular testifier before the commission on behalf of the Department of Justice. He's the appellate chief in the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania. So, welcome back. We have about 30 minutes and not for your statement for the whole thing. So, I think at this point, do we have the little lights go off? Yeah, okay, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Members of the commission, it's an honor, of course, to appear again before you, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the department regarding this very important issue. My initial statement, please cut me off when you're ready to ask questions. It may be a bit longer than five minutes, but I'm an appellate advocate. I'll work in the answers and what I want to say at some point. But we have some important points to address. Obviously, what we're all here for is very clear, which is, we want to target the appropriate people, the people who are the violent recidivists, but we don't want to over-target. And we want to make sure that these very significant penalties are reserved for the people who do tend to be recidivists and do tend to be violent recidivists. And we want to make sure that the definitions are clear enough and applicable enough so that they can readily be applied across the country based on the statutes of all 50 states and make the work doable by all the judges and prosecutors and defense attorneys and probation officers. The current system has not worked well. And what I'd mainly like to talk about this morning, and I'm really happy to have the opportunity to do it, is the categorical approach. The root of the problems, in our view, is not so much the definitions, but the application of this very inflexible, very odd approach that is not good sentencing policy. With respect to the many questions the commission has asked, we've set forth our positions in our letter. We support the idea of eliminating the residual clause and making the guidelines consistent with what the Supreme Court has determined with respect to ACHA. We agree with the suggestion of defining enumerated offenses so that we have more uniformity across the country in what this commission believes should be the predicate crimes of violence. For similar reasons, we agree that all definitions in the guidelines should be consistent for ease of application between 2L and 4B and the other places, the crime of violence definitions appear in the guidelines. We do not agree with the suggestion regarding the definition of a felony, to look to the state's designation, because that, and I can explain more if you have questions about it, that's an invitation to disparity, where similarly situated people who committed the same crimes would be treated differently. But most importantly, like I said, I want to talk about the categorical approach, because that's what creates such inconsistent and even bizarre results. We can spend all the time in the world coming up with the best definition of what a crime of violence is, and we will still have these very strange results once we go out and try to apply it to the different laws in all 50 states. Judge Cardone, for example, spoke very eloquently and has written eloquently about the kidnapping problem. Well, there are very brilliant minds on this commission and on the staff of this commission who can come up with the right definition of kidnapping, but when we go then, if we're limited to the categorical approach, we are going to have a different result in Tennessee and Oklahoma and California and an untold number of other states, because their statutes will not match up to that perfect definition we came up with. It will be overbroad, it will be under-inclusive, it will be wrong. And that's the reason that we keep coming up with these odd outcomes. In our letter, we cite the example of robbery in my home state of Pennsylvania, as common a crime as we see in the records of violent recidivists. And this happens regularly, even weekly, where people come to me with cases in which we have committed armed serial robbers who've repeatedly been convicted of robbery under Pennsylvania law. And in many instances, it's now the case where it's determined they are not career offenders and they are not violent criminals under ACHA. And why is that? It's simply because Pennsylvania has a robbery statute that has six subsections, of which only a couple clearly apply to what you would call robbery. But because of the practice of state district attorneys in just listing every subsection and the practice of clerks in not specifying any further in the judgment what was the nature of the conviction, we have to concede in court that people who we know beyond any doubt are violent criminals are not, simply because of the categorical approach and the various rules that apply to it. This is wrong as a matter of sentencing policy. It was foisted on us because of ACHA and the Supreme Court's interpretation of ACHA. But the Supreme Court was acting in a very different context with focusing on statutory mandatory maximum sentences. And it explained that one of the reasons it did this was because of the constitutional concerns that would apply, that no longer apply to the advisory guidelines. Importantly, this commission itself never expressly adopted the categorical approach. If you go back, and I know you have, and you look at the original commission's work in 1987, 1988, it spoke of the conduct charged in the previous offense. And that language is still there in the commentary to 4B 1.2. But after the Supreme Court decided in Taylor in 1990, the courts pretty much in lockstep decided, we're going to apply the same categorical approach to the guidelines that is applied to ACHA. This commission never acted differently. And what we're left with, time after time, is having to say that somebody who we know committed a violent crime did not. What I'm talking about are not isolated examples. This is something that happens consistently in state after state, based on the vagaries of how the laws are created and the vagaries of what records are kept and how specific those records are. Judge Cardone moments ago asked, what's the better way? We think there is a better way. The better way is let judges do what judges always do, which is evaluate the facts. When we look at any other part of application of the guideline manual, we don't limit judges in these very odd, specific ways to look at the particular elements of statutes. We don't say, for example, in the loss calculation, you should only use some verified certified financial statement, and if it's not there, you can't find the loss number. We let judges do what they do, which is consider all relevant evidence and make factual findings.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Because you used two different terms there. One is, look at the facts and look at the elements. And obviously, judges all the time look at the elements. I mean, that's a legal issue, and that's easy. Looking at the facts can be easy or not, depending on what facts a judge can look at. Are you suggesting that really we should go beyond what the charging documents are? And we're now looking at a crime that didn't occur in front of us, right?
Right.
We're now looking at something in the history. And I thought that we are confined or constrained as to what documents we can look at. Example would be, we couldn't look at a police report, or we have difficulty with police reports. Are you suggesting, and in the police report will probably be at least one person's version of what the facts are. So, how do we do that? How do we just look at those facts?
Well, if I...
If you can't look at a police report.
Sure. If I may explain. First of all, we're not suggesting eliminating the categorical approach entirely. There's a place for it in those instances where the elements of a state offense happen to line up with the definitions that you define, and that can be the end of the matter. So, it will not be a tremendous number of cases in which what we've called the conduct-based backup would come up. When it does, what we're proposing, Your Honor, is that the evidence should be any reliable evidence, the same that's considered, not just a police report, which probably wouldn't be sufficient to meet the government's burden, but whether there are witnesses or other things the government could produce. The government would have the burden by a preponderance of the evidence. The reason, when Your Honor says, the premise that you stated is, we're limited in what we can look at. The reason we're limited now is because of the Shepherd decision. But the Shepherd decision, again, is based on ACHA. And when we read Shepherd, we see that the reason the Supreme Court limited courts to specific documents, specific judicial records, is because it worried that going further than that would offend Apprendice, that if we went further...
Well, let's talk about that.
Sure.
Okay? Because the department's position for years, and one with which I have a lot of sympathy, is that we need to be simplifying the guidelines, that we need to be moving toward a different model than this 530-page monstrosity. Okay? I don't see how we do that with your approach. It seems to me that if we're going to simplify the guidelines, if we're going to move toward a different model, we need to be concerned about the Apprendice implications of these prior conviction enhancements.
Well, Your Honor, we believe we do have to simplify the guidelines. And the place for simplification with respect to crime of violence is in these definitions of enumerated offenses.
Aren't we going to have to say, though, with respect to all prior convictions, that we have to be compliant with Apprendice?
We don't, nor do we do that in any other aspect of the guidelines.
You're talking about doing this by preponderance of the evidence, and you're talking about doing it with a fact-based inquiry. That's not going to be Apprendice compliant.
It's not, but again, Your Honor, nothing in guideline application currently is. Currently, judges...
Yeah, I know. I'm talking about something for the future.
A presumptive system.
Well...
Those of us who are interested in that. Would your proposal not run...
That's what the department was interested in.
The department has looked at a number of things. I don't believe the department has ever taken the position that Apprendice should apply to the sentencing guidelines. In fact, that was the opposite of our position in the Booker litigation. Our position since...
See where that got us.
Our position since Booker was decided, which has been affirmed by every appellate court, is that guideline facts are found by a preponderance of the evidence based on reliable evidence that's admitted at sentencing. Our view is still that that should be the correct approach at sentencing, that Apprendice, we abide by Booker. Apprendice does not apply to the sentencing guidelines so long as they're advisory and the court has the ability to vary within the statutory maximum sentence. So, what we're proposing with respect to crime of violence is the same, and the categorical approach is the same as what courts are doing every single day with regard to every single other issue in this book.
Except for mandatory minimums. Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
So, you said we should let judges do what they do. This is their freedom to do it. They're very good at it. But it seems inconsistent with the department's position that we need mandatory minimums in some cases, because that obviously constrains the ability of judges. I see it as kind of the flip side of this, and so I'm just a little curious why the department has one view with respect to the man-mines and another with this one.
Again, Commissioner, I don't know that we do. Mandatory minimums come up in a narrow set of areas. They exist and they're important, but they don't govern any more than a fraction of sentencings that happen. And that's a matter, of course, for Congress.
But you said this would be a fraction, too, because you said in most cases, we'd be able to use the categorical approach, and it would just be this smaller subset that we do your conduct base. So, you know, I don't know. We'd have to look at data to see how many. But it just seems, as a theoretical matter, we use categories of things in different places. You know, when it's used in a mandatory minimum context, we know that it's going to be overbroad, but the department has kind of weighed the pluses and minuses and come out and said, look, we still want them. And here, again, the categorical rule, it has its problems, it has its benefits, pluses and minuses. And I guess the logic of just let judges do what they do, I have a little bit of a problem with the department saying that, when it does seem inconsistent with the way the department views the mandatory minimum landscape, where however many cases it's used, the department is still very much in favor of having them.
Well, Your Honor, there are very few areas, but they're important, where there are mandatory minimums. They come up in the drug area based on quantity, 924(c), child pornography. Those are the prominent ones. The department has stated that, and they're an issue for Congress, of course. And what the department has stated under this administration in recent years is that we want to work with Congress to make sure that those mandatories are applied correctly and only in the areas in which they serve important purposes. We've stated our position that we're willing to, we want to talk to Congress about lowering some of the mandatories where that may be appropriate. That's an issue for Congress. In general, though, our view absolutely is not, and I hope I'm not misunderstood on this, our view is not mandatory sentencing, that we want some code that lists a mandatory sentence for every offense and take away judicial discretion. That absolutely is not our position when you look at the broad landscape of federal sentencing.
Can I ask you one other question, though? I guess, you know, it's worrying to hear Judge Keely describe that you can't even get the state records that you need to do this, right? And it does seem like a big part of this is just that the records aren't there. And I'm just, as the department made any efforts to try to get Congress to redress that particular issue, you know, maybe with the way we use congressional grants or state funding as a condition of that, that states do a better job with their record-keeping? Because it does seem to me, no matter what we do, whatever rule we have, if we can't get information from the states about even the offenses of conviction, the idea that we could go even further and get these facts, right, it's just going to lead us down that same path. And so, I'm just, in the bigger picture, is the department doing anything to try to improve that kind of record gathering?
I personally don't know the answer to that. I think that's an outstanding idea, and it's something I'll definitely take back, because I think it's a great idea. Though realize that in looking at the near future, the next five, 10, 15 years, we're still dealing with the ramifications of what came before. Where I have the problems every day is I have defendants who started their criminal career in 1990, and I'm looking at records from that date forward. And when I'm getting beyond 10, 15, 20 years, the burn's on the government, and it's the government that then fails to be able to prove what those convictions were, because the record-keeping is so poor.
I'd like to go back, if I can, to Judd Pryor's observation, because it does, I'm not quite sure, I clearly, I understand your position. You say, look, let the judges look at the facts. This is what they do all the time. And again, I come back to, in those cases where it's not clear from the Shepherd documents that we can ascertain the facts, what do you want us to do? Is it your position, well, look, we can look beyond it, because we can look at police reports, we can look at statements that are made outside of court and so forth. Do you think we can for this approach?
Yes, and I also think we could call witnesses. I think what we're asking is that the government be given the opportunity to prove by a preponderance of the evidence that someone committed a violent offense.
But you know, that's where, if I just jump in, it is different from what we do every day in a sentencing. I've been sentencing for 20 years. When you make facts of how much drug quantity is, or whether or not the financial fraud involved X, those are hard enough, but they're at least the instant offense that's in front of you. I find it, you know, I've been doing this for years, and you go back to a domestic abuse situation, and he said, she said, and you're trying to untangle exactly what happened, and then the probation office is flipping out because they can't find the records. It is different. I mean, it's hard to capture...
The full case.
The full case without actually taking testimony or at least having major proffers from the police officers themselves, rather than just a police report. It would expand.
There would be cases in which it would expand it, but, Your Honor, what I see are cases that are not difficult. And those are the cases in which the government would elect to try to show its burden. What I see are the cases in which people are doing shootings and gunpoint robberies and assaults, in which it's readily obvious from all the records and all the known facts. So, if I could just say one thing, there's no question that this would be a new area and new work, but what we're balancing here is we're balancing this against the unfairness that comes when similarly situated people are treated differently, when that person who unquestionably committed a kidnapping in Tennessee gets a totally different sentence.
But with the paucity of evidence that's going to exist in lots of cases, then you're going to have the same, you're going to have disparity. You're going to have cases where there were offenders who were in that position, but you just can't prove it, too.
Absolutely, but we want the opportunity, because we know...
And you would say if you err on the side of leniency.
There's disparity either way. Well, there's disparity, Your Honor, with all respect, in the enforcement of criminal law, in what we can prove and what we can't prove. And this would be another example of that. But we want the opportunity, because we've seen so many cases. And again, this is not anecdotal. This is something that's happening in every district, where because of the categorical approach, and it's happening even more now in the wake of Johnson, I'm working now on a petition where now we don't have the residual clause, we basically only have the elements clause for ACHA. So, now someone has presented to me a very strong argument that third-degree murder under Pennsylvania law, which is basically any murder other than premeditated, is not a crime of violence, because of how Pennsylvania has interpreted it and how courts have interpreted the elements clause. When we see an argument like that, one that I can't commit right now, but that the government may have to concede, that's where we know this enterprise has gone off the rails. And so, we're balancing one problem against another.
In the district court, Judge Keely suggested that right now, district court judges in, say, the robbery cases that you talked about in Pennsylvania, where you can prove these were armed robberies, and yet they didn't qualify. Is the government getting those documents and making arguments like you're talking about for purposes of departures or variances? Is that happening now?
It happens, but I can tell you that it's very inconsistent as to when judges will depart or not. Most judges in my district, I can speak of, and I know in many others, do not give upward departures or variances, and certainly nothing approaching the career offender guideline that would apply. So, when we talk about disparity, there's enormous disparity in how that plays out. We don't secure upward variances that often on this ground.
Back to the Apprendice point, would you agree that for those of us who would support a simplified and presumptive system, that your approach would run afoul of Apprendice if the guidelines were no longer advisory?
Oh, certainly. If the guidelines were not advisory, it would run afoul of that, and so would every other application. We would have jury findings regarding everything in the guidelines if Apprendice applied.
No, you wouldn't. Not prior convictions, you wouldn't.
Not prior convictions.
As long as you were compliant with...
That's true.
The categorical approach, right?
Absolutely. And what I'm suggesting is...
Which is what we're here talking about.
Right. I'm suggesting that if Apprendice applied to the guidelines, we'd have much bigger problems than what we're talking about today, if the first majority opinion of Booker controlled.
We're talking about a very different manual.
No, I understand, sir. Now, one question that did come up is regarding the elements clause. My friends from the defenders I know have suggested that the elements clause takes care of this, and we don't even need any enumerated offenses. And I would invite you to look at the litigation that's happening around the country right now after Johnson, in which defense lawyers, as they should, are now attacking all sorts of crimes that are indisputably violent crimes, but saying that they don't satisfy the elements clause. The most prominent one that the defenders are briefing, I can tell you, in every district, is Hobzac robbery. Hobzac robbery, the most commonly charged federal robbery offense. It's being argued is not a crime of violence under ACHA, because it can be committed through a threat against property as well as a threat against the person. And then you use the categorical approach, you go back and look at the charging documents and the judgment, and you don't see that any distinction was made, if it's even a divisible statute to begin with.
But that's a problem for Congress, not for us.
No, correct, but should this body adopt only an elements approach?
Can you just explain Hobzac robbery is a federal offense?
It is. It is. So, if you have a defendant with a prior Hobzac robbery...
Federal offense.
Correct.
Well, can't you get the modified Shepherd documents to figure that out? You know, you can have the plea call, generally, right? The prosecutor states all, everything, and then you say to the defendant, is this true? And then the person says, yes, and you can consider that, right?
It isn't the real problem, not that. Isn't the real problem the state offenses, because the state offenses, and I will draw from my experience, and I'm sure my colleagues would agree, I get the police reports in 20% of the cases. I mean, 80% of the cases, we can't describe, it says in the pre-sentence report, we can't describe the offense because we don't have the police report, or we don't have enough information about it. Now, that's the majority of cases that we look at in terms of what happened, what happened. So, if you don't have the categorical approach, what are you left with? And I understand, your solution to that is, I'll tell you what we're left with, we're left with a hearing. And at the hearing, the United States attorney has the option of trying to produce evidence which would satisfy, which would satisfy the court. Maybe that's the answer.
Well, the other part of the answer is, we do still have the categorical approach. As I said, there are many offenses in which the elements will match up to the definitions that you adopt, and we think it's a very good idea for this commission, just for that reason, to define these enumerated offenses as you've endeavored so far and informed by all the comment that you're getting. So, we're not eliminating the categorical approach, but we want the option of a hearing for these cases that really result in inconsistent results.
Yes, yesterday, I'm not up on it, I'm sure your firm are up on it tonight, and the Supreme Court heard argument on the word "as described in." I don't pretend to be an expert on it. So, you've had a very interesting suggestion, which is, don't make up a new definition, just use the existing federal statutes and eliminate the interstate commerce nexus requirement as described. Should we be waiting on doing that till we hear from the Supreme Court on what they think about that language?
I don't think so. I don't have the exact words in front of me, but in preparing our suggestion and our submission, we had that case in mind, and we drafted the phrase in a manner that we believe satisfies any concern about that. Now, we're only suggesting federal definitions for consistency where they exist. There's still about half of the enumerated offenses that the commission has proposed that we've proposed, where there isn't a comparable federal definition, and you would need your own definition. But where we're using the federal definition, we propose language, and of course, I'm sure you can improve it, that would just make clear, this is the definition, we're not using the federal jurisdictional hooks, we're not using the other things that might appear in the statute.
So, what if we adopted the federal statute, and then with the ones that don't have a federal statute, just leave the existing case law where it is?
You could certainly do that, but I think that there are ways to improve on the case law. And there are circuit conflicts out there that haven't been addressed regarding what the quote generic meaning of this commission's enumerated offenses were.
So, those are the ones you'd say fix.
Well, I think if we're doing this once and for all to do it, I understand, I heard Your Honor's thoughtful question before to the previous panel about, well, the judges have done all this work, why don't we keep that? But I think if we take the long view of sentencing, not just in the next couple of years, but for the next 10, 20 years and beyond, it's a helpful exercise to do this and do this right, and not so much rely on the existing case law that we have, where we know there are conflicts, we know there's uncertainty, we know there are some disparate results.
Can I ask you, with the using of the, I mean, I wasn't, in just trying to figure out which, if we were going to have a uniform set of definitions, trying to think about, you know, model penal code versus federal versus what we make up on our own, what's the thinking behind using the federal definitions for things? Because my initial reaction was, the states don't really use the federal code as a model for anything. They're way more likely to have turned to the model penal code. And so, if we were just kind of anticipating where we're more likely to get overlap, I would have predicted it would have been the model penal code. But I mean, you must have a reason that you think the federal one would be the better uniform standard, and I just kind of wanted to hear a little bit more about why.
Sure. Well, we suggested the federal definitions because they've been approved by Congress and because they've been litigated. There is case law regarding those areas, as opposed to coming up with new definitions. When we then go to the next step and say, let's compare it to all the state statutes that are out there, that as opposed to the model penal code, as opposed to other treatises, really, there's no overlap at all among any of them. The statutes out there are just so different. You know, Judge Breyer mentioned kidnapping of moving somebody from one room to another. That's what we're dealing with here, where you could take any single one of these crimes and then wade out into the state statutes, and we just don't find any consistency. So, we think it's important to get the definitions right. And I hope I've not heard to say that if the categorical approach stays around, well, who cares about the definitions? We have to get the definitions right and then do the best we can in applying it. But we're going to be frustrated if we have these excellent new definitions that the commission adopts, and we then have to apply it categorically to state statutes.
Can I ask you one other question? On the communication of threats proposal that you had, why, what's the department's thinking, including threats to injure somebody's reputation as a crime of violence?
Well, the predicate that we have in that definition is that it has to be you're threatening violence in order to threaten reputation. So, there always is violence has to be involved in all of it.
So, you would, that's how this is interpreted?
Correct.
It's always a threat of violence to...
So, extortion has to be limited, because in California, the definition of extortion, and I'm sure in other states as well, is the threat to obtain, you want to tame property in exchange for not exposing a secret that would cause some, you know, discomfort to the victim.
Right. Threatening reputation should not be a crime of violence if I say I'm going to give some unpleasant fact about somebody. Extortion, though, yeah...
Otherwise, you're outlawing all politics.
And court arguments, too, perhaps.
And that's clear from this? Because I didn't read this this way, this wasn't, it's not an intuitive reading to say, any threat of use of violence to threaten, like, so you're threatening to threaten?
It's sort of, it probably could be worded better, but I want to make clear that we think a threat of violence has to be involved. But extortion, another great example of the inconsistency in state statutes that makes this such a frustrating exercise, no matter what definition you have, starting with the federal definition, you know, which we limit in our proposal, because it expands beyond violent conduct to other things.
Just going back to this whole issue of trying to get the most dangerous of the dangerous, and I think everyone would agree with that one, you know, making sure that true career offenders get the appropriate punishment. But the question that I have is, in these states, you said you were against reclassifying felonies. So, take the eight states where the misdemeanors go very high, and you've got two people who are, you have somebody who's convicted of two predicates, such as misdemeanors, no jail time, maybe barroom brawl or that kind of thing, and then suddenly they're career I'm trying to figure out how you would handle that. In fact, in our district, many of the prosecutors request variance or downward departure, because it's so disproportionate. And I noticed in the immigration area, they have a sentence imposed requirements, so that you actually have to have gone to jail for a certain period of time. How would you deal with it? Go back to Commissioner Roblowski's comment, we really want to make sure that the truly violent people are the ones who get this. violent people are the ones who get this.
Well, variance is the right way to do it, but I can tell you that in Pennsylvania, where I live, it's another one of those states. And what Pennsylvania classifies as a misdemeanor are actually serious offenses and serious controlled substance offenses. And that's the problem with looking to state definitions. So what happens is, for example, controlled substance offense in Pennsylvania can be up to a five-year mandatory. Misdemeanors, not mandatory, misdemeanor, goes up to five years in Pennsylvania. And so you could have somebody selling drugs in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and a few miles away in Binghamton, New York, it's a felony by any definition. That's a definition of seriousness that works from state to state so that you won't have somebody in one state say, I did the same thing as him, but that his state calls it a felony and mine doesn't.
But if we went back to the statutory definition in 922-
G.
G1, whatever it is-
Two-year cap.
Which is the, two years, maybe we're not wedded to two, maybe it should be three, maybe two and a half. I don't know what the right number is, but basically follow the statutory scheme that's already set up. Obviously, Congress was worried about that before.
Sure.
And that would just be another way of doing it. Or do the sentence-imposed approach of the Immigration Act.
The, so a couple of things there. It's in Section 921 is where the definition applies, and it applies to the whole-
I don't know where my coat-
Yeah, I didn't have my coatbook either.
Oh, you've got it.
But it applies to, and it applies to the whole chapter, so it's an important definition. That definitely is the second-best option to what we've proposed because it's consistent, it's fair. Time imposed, we've suggested is not a good option, and the reason is, we talk about the difficulty of getting court records. It is even more difficult to prove how long somebody actually served. We would actually be subpoenaing witnesses for that in some cases. And so-
Just hard to, hard to-
Exactly. And so the, this definite, we think that, we've always suggested that for crime of violence punishable by more than a year is sufficient to identify the right people. But if you like the congressional definition, we would favor that simply because it gives us the same important consistency that we need.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have anything else? Thank you very much. We'll take a 15-minute morning break.